This is the Finance Committee meeting of January 26th. Thank you all for coming. Tom, thank you for providing us with minutes from January 12th so efficiently, so fast. I think a motion to approve. One of you has to motion.
So moved, and I'll try and keep it up.
Second.
A motion to second to approve the January 12th minutes. All in favor? Tom?
Aye.
And Connie?
Aye.
Danris says aye. Could you make sure, Tom, that they're sent to Barbara? She made a plea with us to do that today. The mayor's not here. Is there anybody from the public who wishes to speak? Now is your chance. Okay. So here's my goal tonight. I want to deal with the city clerk stipend. I want to finish that. I want to be able to get that in the packet and get it to a public hearing because it's an ordinance, which wouldn't happen next meeting. It would happen the meeting after that. So that's my goal for us to debate that and conclude that. Review of salaries and stipends. I do want to look at stipends for some of our boards and committees. The last time we did this, a year ago, then Omar will remember, we were going to look at, at this, this term, things like the Board of Public Works and other big, major committees that do a lot of work for us and whether they should get a better stipend. So those have to be dealt with before the budget is concluded, but elected officials we have until the end of the year. So I'm not going to talk about those tonight. The pay grades, I'm going to look at, we're going to just introduce those. That's why I invited Emily to explain them, so that we all can remember what we're talking about. Again, I don't want to have a discussion about those particular grades tonight. I want to introduce it and have, give you time to look at it. So let's talk about the city clerk salary. As Barbara's requested, I'm going to share the screen.
Okay, just to clarify, this is clerk to the city council.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I may have mistaken. I was about to change that. What the heck? Oh, here it is. How did I get that? I apologize. I don't know where it is. Let me find it again. No, because it wasn't open. I don't believe it. I apologize again. I'm going to find it, I promise you. Let me see if I can get it on my screen now. I have to close other screens unfortunately, in order to get this one up. Let me see if that works. Okay, here we go. So Barbara is requesting a pay increase that hasn't happened for five years. My take on it is yes, the city, first of all, the clerk to the city council is a separate position in the sense that it does not have to be the city clerk. It can be somebody else. And it is paid separately. Currently, it is paid by the meeting, correct Barbara?
By the meeting and per month.
Okay. Barbara is requesting an increase and also changing it to a monthly payment. And the result being that there would not be, we've had in the past worries about, I remember talking with this over with PEG, whether we have a special meeting, whether we have the money and the budget to pay for Barbara. If we went to a monthly payment and a yearly payment, we would not have to worry about that. Barbara would attend any meeting that the city council requested. In other words, if we had a special meeting, Barbara would come. Am I correct on that Barbara?
Correct.
Okay. So if we went, this is what it costs per year here. If we went here, that's $760 increase. If we went here, that's $1,260 increase. These are the two areas I personally feel we should look at. I think this is a little too high for now. I'm willing to go with the yearly plan. I think that's better, in the sense that, that we don't have to worry about paying each meeting or whether we have enough money in the budget to pay extra meetings, et cetera. And I think Barbara does a great deal as clerk to the city council. So Barbara, do you want to say anything before I ask the other councillors to chime in?
Well, I think, I think it's time for, for an upgrade. It'll be, it'll be seven years come, come this July. So, you know, it's time. I also think that the amount of work that I've been doing for the council has increased dramatically over the last few years. I mean, really, as an example, I'm still working on last week's council meeting right now and it's time to start for next week's. So it really is a substantial amount of work. And I think you're getting a really, you know, this is a bargain. And when I retire, I mean, I, I bet you...
You're not allowed to do that. We didn't tell you that. It's part of the job description.
Yeah, I mean, down the road, I, I, you know, this could end up being a separate position all by itself, but for right now, you know, I think this is a bargain. I do think, you know, there has to be some equity between other clerk positions within the city. I'm just going to say that. So I think this is lower than some, but I, I just wanted to put a few options out there for, for what the amounts would be. So that's why I listed all four of them. But as you do know, this, this, this position really is a lot of work. And it's, it's really increased, the amount of work, I mean, it's a lot of work. So, and on top of...
It's established it's a lot of work, Barbara.
Yeah, on top of all the regular things that I have to do, it's, yeah, so your consideration of being, you know, fair would be appreciated.
My position on that is that indeed she is correct because I have been on the council the longest. And I've noted the last two terms, we've got some really passionate councillors and we have a lot of things that have been discussed, new ordinances, zoning and everything. And minutes are really long, which is proof of how much work they take. And that's not all Barbara does. She has to prepare documents for signing and getting them ready to go. So I can attest to her, her comment that the work has increased exponentially because the work of the council has increased. We used to have half hour meetings. They don't exist anymore. A meeting is less than two hours, that's a good night. And that means that we're working hard. And that means clerk to the council is working hard. So yes, I believe it should be an increase. And I don't think it's fair to compare clerks in the city. It's apples and oranges, in my opinion. We should be looking at this, the way Barbara is doing her job and whether or not the position of clerk to the city council deserves this kind of increase. So now I'm going to ask Tom and Connie and Omar if they'd like to say anything about this. Who wants to be first?
I mean, I was sworn in four years ago and I have created a lot of work for Barbara. I don't think that that's something that anyone would, anyone would dispute. I certainly think that when you compare the meetings that I attended as I was preparing to run for city council to the meetings that we have today, just the, the length of the meetings, the length of the minutes, the complexity of the issues that are being discussed, has dramatically increased. To say nothing of the fact that just, you know, a good deal of inflation has happened. And so the actual purchasing power of this, is it a stipend or a salary?
Stipend.
Okay, stipend. The, the, just the purchasing power of this stipend has diminished since the last time it was discussed. So I would absolutely support raising it. I think that that's only fair. In terms of what the correct amount is, I guess, I don't have like a really good conception in my head about how to calculate what the, what the right number is there. I'm interested, councillor Reston, you, you said that like the, the, like the clerks of other committees are sort of apples and oranges. And I'd just be interested in sort of digging a little deeper into why you feel that. I, I just, I don't really, I don't know if there's, like, what about these jobs makes them comparable or not comparable? But certainly something higher after five years that includes...
I'm only saying that, Tom, because, I said that because the job descriptions are totally different. I don't think it's, it's, the comparison is necessarily fair. I'll ask Emily in the meantime to look up those clerk positions while we continue this discussion. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd be interesting, I'd be interested in understanding what the range is. Like, what are we talking about? Like, I'm new to this, so I'm trying to understand what's the range between those clerks.
The other clerks?
Yeah.
I don't know. I think some of those clerks, that's their whole pay. They don't have another, this is a stipend pay, so they're full time, whereas this is part time. So that's a different, that's hard to compare, correct Emily? Am I correct in that?
Yeah, I think I have to look in more detail for like stipend people because I'd have to individually pick it out. But some positions believe in planning and stuff, those are just part of their full position.
So this is not part of the city clerk's position? So it's a separate position? So that's what I mean about the apples and oranges. Hard to compare it because some of those job descriptions include the clerk, the work that they do.
I see.
Omar, you've been here a while. What do you think?
Not a while, the same as Tom, so. But, but, I mean, that's, it's a few years, that's, that's for sure. Definitely, that position do, do a lot. And Barbara, and I'm going to use a name because we have Barbara now, but in the future it could be someone else, right? And so every time that we talk about the position, we should, we should be talking about the city council clerk, again, the future. And I hope she doesn't retire soon because she's a, is a good clerk in our council. And I hope we can keep her for as long as, as we want, no, as she won, as we want. But definitely, definitely, I do agree with Tom. I think that position deserves more money. What is the right amount? That's, that's a really good question. When, when it's about money, and it's, it's people's money, so we have to be careful what is going to be the right amount. But definitely Barbara is doing a great job. We put her in a position that probably she wasn't before. With, with the new councillors, we put a lot of stuff that she wasn't doing before. And I'm 100% in to increase her salary.
Okay, I would like to make a decision tonight. It doesn't become effective till July 1st. And again, I don't know how we compare other clerks because their job descriptions require their clerking. It's not, if this was the city clerk and this was part of the city clerk's job, that would be different, but this isn't. And I also think having this be an attractive salary would maintain the future city clerk doing the clerk of the city council work, because that's an advantage to the city, to have the city clerk and clerk to the council be one and the same person. Thomas?
Oops. One question that I would ask, maybe, maybe of Emily, is are there other committee clerks who receive a stipend for exclusively that work? And like, maybe they have another position in the city, but it is sort of set aside as, like, 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 that's just, like, that is what they're getting paid for is just the stipend for that particular job? Because obviously, it's true that like, some people within the planning department, one of the things that they do is be the clerk to the housing, you know, they're the, the Affordable Housing Committee or Partnership or something. But I know like that there are some, there are some boards and committees that do have paid clerks, right?
I believe so. I haven't had any new ones in the last like two years, so I have to look into that a little bit more. But I do think there is at least like, maybe two other ones.
I thought we wanted to reduce those Collins Center ones.
Yeah, that, I mean, I think that was the intent with the Collins Center was to reduce stipends because they just wanted it to all be together as part of the job.
But again, these are two separate jobs, so it's not part of one job. Connie?
Yeah, I'm, I'm struggling a little bit, to be honest. I feel like this is a, a job that it's been at this particular salary number for five years and the work has in fact doubled. So I'm just gonna, I'm gonna say I would actually support a $5,000 stipend. I think the amount of work that Barbara has said and that I've seen just in the little bit of time that I've been doing this in terms of trying to keep up with city council, informing us the things that we need to be doing, et cetera. You all said that meetings used to be 30 minutes and now they're like over two hours. And that two hours is a good night. So it seems to me that the amount of work has doubled. And so I would actually be in, in favor and out of respect to the work that Barbara's doing and we all are saying that she's done an amazing job, I would be in support of, of honoring the fact that over a five-year period, she's only, she's, that's not as much as she should be getting in terms of the work that she's doing. So I would be supportive of that.
And the other thing to consider, it might not be five, for five more years that we even look at it again.
Right.
Whose hand was up first? Jen and then Omar?
Um, I, to kind of just go along with what Emily was saying, in doing payroll, I haven't looked, you know, in depth, but most of the committees, you just get a stipend for being on the committee. So, you know, like, I'm on the retirement board. Kimmy is our clerk, but, you know, like, the president, the vice president, none of them get a higher stipend. And I know in some of the committees, I think there are different stipends for the officers. I don't know that for sure, but I don't really remember ever seeing a stipend for another committee clerk that is any different than just a stipend for being on the committee. Do you know what I mean? So, just throwing that out there.
Omar?
I just want to second Connie. I think that number 5,000 is, is the number there I think we're looking for. I just was doing the math between the hours, the, I'm not going to say minimum wage because I think minimum wage should, should be more than, than what we have now. But I was trying to do the math and the job the, the city council clerk is doing. And I can end with the, can the same numbers that councillor Ordonez was, was telling to the committee. I think 5,000 is, is the number that we're looking for.
I just did a little math. If, if you take 10 years, considering we might not look at this for five more years, that's $176 a year increase. So it's $1,760 increase over what we're paying now.
Wasn't it 1700 a year?
That's just another way to look at it, you know? Barbara and then you, Tom?
Sure. I, I just wanted to mention the licensing board.
But I thought that, and I'm pretty sure that Lindsay is now paid through her position. We stopped paying that, there was a, at one point, and I think Omar remembers this, we were looking at a increase of $10,000. Then the mayor pulled that. So I don't think there's a separate payment for Lindsay. It's part of her job now? Am I correct on that, Emily, Jen? You're shaking your head, so I'm correct.
Except she gets paid more hours than, than we do.
Okay. But it's part of her job. It's not a separate job, is all I'm saying.
Right, but you, you don't want to pay me my hourly rate for, for what I'm doing because it would be, it would be a lot more than this. Just, I'm just, I'm just saying that.
Okay, okay. Tom?
Oh, I don't even remember. Yeah, pass. I think somebody else already said what I was going to say.
Are you okay with 5,000? Because Connie and Omar seem to like that. I like the 5,000 too because again, 10 years is what we're really looking at. Five years or whatever, seven years. This probably won't get looked at again until the next city clerk comes in and we have to offer the clerk of the council to that person and what are we going to pay that person? So it's a lot before we increase it again, you know what I mean?
Yeah. I mean, I am comfortable with 5,000. I think that we are living in increasingly complex times where this position is going to require more hours than it did before. And I think it's all, you know, I mean, you brought it up yourself, we used to have half hour meetings. When was the last time we had a half hour meeting? There's just a lot of stuff going on, there's a lot of, there's a lot of, and there's a lot of, and, and look, I mean, I just realistically, there's a lot going on in the world where cities are having to step up and be more proactive in policymaking because the federal government isn't doing it and the states aren't doing it. So like, I just think that it's realistic to assume this is going to be more work going forward. And I think that, I mean, I think we're probably still getting a deal at 5,000, to be honest. I mean, but, yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay, if there's no more discussion, the motion would be to increase the clerk of the city council salary effective July 1st, 2022 to 5,000 per year payable as a monthly payment rather than by meeting. Do we have to write in Barbara? Not you, but as clerk of the city council, the fact that you would attend all meetings of the city council? Do you think that needs to be in writing?
That would be, that would be assumed. I mean, I'm not going to, I'm not going to do subcommittees.
No, all right, but I'm talking about a new person. I don't know.
No, I, I don't think so.
All right. Omar?
I have a question. How that works if we're going to pay a month, but Barbara missed one meeting and assistant clerk will be in that meeting? How are we going to split that?
Right. So what I, what I would do is I would, I would pay her, probably keeping like what we pay per meeting now, maybe a little bit more. And I would adjust my, my pay for that, that month in the payroll system so that she gets that. Yeah.
She would only get the 270 per month?
Oh, no, she would just get paid for whatever meeting she was covering.
I understand.
Yeah.
Do we need to make any note of that in, in our final vote?
I kind of think we do because the assistant, the assistant clerk of the city council shall be paid pro-rated amount equal to the monthly pay of the, of the clerk of the city council. In other words, the clerk of the city council is getting $416 per month. There's two meetings. So that means that the assistant clerk to the city council would get one half of that. Does that make sense, Tom?
That doesn't necessarily, that's not necessarily what happens though. Because even if, even if I was to have her cover a meeting, it doesn't mean that she's going to be doing all the outside work. So in the past, in the past, we would just pay her for the amount for covering that physical being in the meeting. But that's, that's how it's, that's how it's been done in the past.
I think Tom is right. We need to write that into the, the ordinance. You have a suggestion, Barbara? Because I think the language has to be there. It can't be just assumed.
Well, you could pick an amount, you could say, you could say, if, if right now we're getting paid $75 if she was to cover a meeting, if you want to do, like, pick a number and it's...
Oh, so she gets $75 per meeting?
Right.
Where you, and you're getting paid an extra amount per month because you're doing all the other work?
Because I do all the rest of the work. Yep, yep. I mean, even, I usually even prep the, the minutes, so she just kind of fills it in. So that, that's how it's been in the past.
So what do you think, people? Do we want to write $100 per meeting or something for the assistant clerk to the city council?
Yeah, alternate, alternate meeting coverage shall be compensated at $100 per meeting or something like that.
Right, because there might come a time where it's not the assistant clerk who, who does that job, it's somebody else.
Yeah, you could say just alternate and, yeah.
Okay, if I could, I like it. If I can, if I can just, in accordance with the Home Rule Charter, section 2, the salary of the clerk of the council shall be 5,000 per year and an alternate clerk to the council shall be $100 per meeting effective July 1st, 2022? Does that sound all right to the councillors? Something like that? Did you get that, Barbara?
Yeah.
Omar, okay with that? You're very dark, Omar. You need light on your face. Your lighting designer is a failure.
I, I know, it's this room.
Okay, so if that's the case, then for the purposes of this meeting, the motion would be 5,000 per year for the clerk to the city council and $100 per meeting for the alternate clerk to the council.
Second.
Are you okay with that motion?
Sure.
So who's moving it? Somebody say so moved.
So moved.
Second.
Second. We have a motion to, for a new ordinance for the clerk to the city council shall be 5,000 per year and the alternate clerk to the council shall be $100 per meeting. Any further discussion? Mary Ann, Tom Peake?
Aye.
Connie?
Aye.
And Danris says aye. Barbara, you need to write this up to be included in the packet?
I do. Okay.
Well...
No, I can do that.
It is, I think you have it ulterior motives to do it right.
Well, I, I mean, you should have it as a report from your committee, but I can write it up.
Well, write it up and I will do that.
Okay, I'll do that.
All right, I'll try to do it tomorrow if you get it up to me, okay?
Yeah, no, I'll do it tomorrow.
All right, now, I want to talk a little bit about the pay plan. So Exhibit A shows the grades. These were given to me kindly by Emily. And I wanted to have Emily, for the sake of, I know these pretty well. Tom, you may be familiar, but Connie may not be. So for the sake of just learning, well, how the pay plan is used tonight. Currently, our positions that we control, and I'm only talking about those. The city clerk is an F grade and the city auditor is here. Where's the principal assessor? Oh, city clerk and principal assessor are F and the city auditor is G. I'll just lead off that the Collins Center came up with these grades when they reported in 2019. So if we're going to change them, we're going against their opinion, I would think. That being said, that doesn't mean we can't consider it. That being said, that doesn't mean we can't consider it. So take it away. I also have the dollar amounts which show the which show the 12 steps. So maybe what you can do, Emily, is talk about the pay plan and how the steps work. And what you discussed today with me too, or yesterday.
So the Collins Center did a study back in 2019 where they compared our municipality with other municipalities of equal size and a bunch of other factors, just to kind of make sure we were all within a similar competitive range for salary for our employees. So then the way they do, back in 2019, they set up the scale based on those competitive wages and they also created the the classifications. The classifications are based on a few different factors such as like supervisor supervision required, education, experience, judgment, confidentiality, things like that. There's like a bunch of different factors that go into the classification. So if I'm being completely candid, I do think our scale with the steps is behind because what we should have been doing is doing a 2% COLA increase every, every year since the scale was created. Unfortunately, due to COVID and the unpredictability of, you know, how the world was going to be, the COLA increases weren't done for about two years. So the scale kind of fell behind. And now we did do a COLA increase this year, but we're still like about 4% behind on the scale compared to other municipalities. So there is a little bit of question there with that. As far as the classification, I don't know if I would, it may not be that the classifications are wrong. I did recently talk with our rep from the Collins Center who did this report. And she said that it's really focused more on the scale is the issue. So we need to fix the scale and then fix people's placement on the scale rather than changing around how the classification is. So and then I think an area of frustration that people are having is because our scale was behind when we had new employees come in over the last two, three years, we've had to place them at a higher place on the scale to remain competitive with other municipalities. So then these other people who have been here maybe fell a little bit behind the new people because they were making their way up the steps or whatever it was. And the other people had to come in a little bit higher to that, if that makes sense.
It does. And and one of the reasons that I brought this forward is because we, for the first time in a long time, had to fill two city council positions, the auditor and the principal assessor. And as such, we looked at competitiveness. And are we paying enough where we can't, A, compete to get the best person? And we got good people, by the way. And secondly, retain those people. The other thing I wanted to explain to those, Connie, maybe if you don't know this, if you're in a grade, let's say you're in grade F here, city clerk, okay? Grade F has this salary scale. And these 12 steps basically, I'll simplify this, is automatically by policy, a step per year is increased. So if the city clerk came in, entry level at this position, 29, 28, every year it would go up until they've been here 12 years. Am I stating that correctly?
Yes.
What bothers me is if someone's here 20 years, they're stuck, except for COLA increases. And I don't know about merit increases and everything else. That gets really complicated. But that's how the system is now. I'm just explaining it. If we were to take a position in, I'm sorry, wrong one, in in grade F here, let's say the health agent. And we changed it to grade G because we decided that should happen. If the health director's been here the longest, they would be at 38, 41. Okay, if we changed it to G, that 38, 41 is somewhere in the sixth step. So they would get increases continually from here. Am I correct on that? If we decided to make that change. I'm not saying I'm advising that. I'm just trying to explain it. Does that make sense to you guys, Connie and everybody else? Okay, so the question is, number one, are the grades correct for our three positions? If so, and if we go with what you're saying, Emily, if we change the scale, we're not just affecting those three positions, we're affecting everybody. And if we did that, does that automatically mean that come the new budget year, they are deserving of that increase that we just changed by ordinance? Is that how the policy now works? What leeway does the mayor have in this?
What do you mean?
Well, if we change the scale and we we added, I'll just use 10% to this entire thing, just for the sake of argument. Does everybody get a 10% increase? I mean, that's a lot of money.
That's something we'd have to look at as like, would we place them like someplace that would be a certain percentage above where they currently are on the scale? So like if they were at a 12 and say we just increase the scale by 10%, that would put them really at like an eight or something like that. So they have those steps to continue forward to move on. It might be something we need to look and like compare where people are at. I really would advise against moving classifications. I think we really just need to focus in on that scale and how we could work with that. But
I tend to agree because we paid the Collins Center a lot of money to do this study.
Yes.
So changing the classifications would go against that. Now, I I'm gonna entertain questions, but I again, I didn't want to debate this so much as to introduce it. Tom?
Yeah, so I'm just trying to figure out what like levers we can pull here. Is it possible that we could just give somebody like a step increase? Like accelerate? So say someone's a step four and they haven't received a COLA because of COVID. Could we just say, okay, that we're gonna, that person's a step seven now and just, you know, even though it's normally a year by year thing? Because I like looking at the actual grades, I feel like the positions sort of are in like, it's intuitive if you look at the other positions that are there, like, okay, these are, these seem similar, these seem similar, like, and and like, as we said, we also paid the Collins Center a lot of money to sort of develop this. But if we, if, if, if the concern is that we might not be competitive because a lack of COLAs sort of puts some people behind, is it possible that we could say that we're going to take this position and accelerate it? Accelerate an individual by a couple steps if that, if that was a, I'm not necessarily saying we should do that. I'm just wondering, like, other than, like, if we're saying that we can't move people or that we shouldn't be moving people in between grades, what other leeway do we actually have here?
I'll let Emily answer that, then I'll go to Barbara.
I mean, I would say that there, yes, there would be the option to kick someone up a couple steps. That would obviously be with the mayor and the budget and all that stuff by her discretion, but there's nothing that says that you technically can't do that. I think it could get messy, but it could technically be an option.
Well, let me say that this is an ordinance. When we establish Exhibit A and the pay plan Exhibit B, this says January 1st, because we gave everybody a 2% COLA. We have to it's hard for me to just change one particular person without looking at the entire thing. So and and I don't know how fair it would be to just look at one person. We could look at our three positions, which is kind of what the agenda says. But if we're establishing that their grades are correct, then this is the only thing we have left we could do is change the scale. Right, Tom? So.
That's, I guess, what I'm saying is, if we've, if we, if if the broad sense is that the grades are correct, then I guess my question is, what are our actual options? Because I hear what you're, you know, Emily, I hear what you're saying about like a lag in COLAs potentially leading to a situation where our ability to stay competitive could potentially be a little bit compromised. I want to take that seriously. I'm just wondering what our actual options are.
Okay, I'm gonna go to Barbara for.
Okay, so I I'm not gonna say too much, but I do want to say that I'm I'm at step 12 and I think I've been there almost since this was even adopted. I don't even know if I've even gone up a step. I I guess I'd be interested to know how many people citywide are also on the top step. Have no, I have nowhere to go. So Tom's Tom's suggestion for my position and me is is doesn't doesn't work. I also, you know, I've seen the council bringing in new positions that are not department heads at at the same grade. So I, and I also know what other clerks make. And when I retire, which won't be that much longer from now, if you're going to attract somebody from another community, I I think it's going to be tough at the salary. I I think there's assistant positions that are making more than me. And and I I just, I just, I mean, if you have to hire somebody to bring them in here and you have to put them on the top step to even make it attractive, to me, that seems like something's not right. It's not, I mean, if I was to go for example, go up a grade, you know, I would be up at grade step eight. And you'd, there'd be some room to move and it would be a little more attractive. I just, you know, three years from now, when you're looking for somebody new, you might be facing having to bring somebody in right at the very top to bring anybody decent into the position. And I'm just, I I know what other places are paying and I know that we're behind. So whether we have to adjust the whole Exhibit B, like putting us up so there's some room, but that's, that's how I see it. I mean, I I really, I don't think for my position, I'm just talking about me, I I don't think we're competitive and I think it's going to be you're not going to get the best candidate if you can't make the salary attractive.
Jen?
Um, I just wanted to point out that right now, minimum wage is at $14.25, I believe, just went up. And the goal in Massachusetts is for it to be $15 an hour by next year, 2023. That said, when this scale was created, minimum wage was less than 1350 because that's what we've been paying, I think, last year. So and it's been moving up steadily. So what I'm trying to say is grade A, step one, that's going to be a minimum wage, almost minimum wage position next year. You know what I mean? And the thing is, we do hire people at minimum wage. They don't fall onto this scale because it's a, it's a usually more of an hourly type job or whatever. You know, and I think that, like you said, I mean, yeah, the Collins Group, which was before my time here, did a great job with this study, but it was you know, what was the data from 2018?
Yeah.
You know, and things, things change, even though they have the steps increasing because like Barbara, someone like Barbara, she's at 12, you know, we can't hire someone new and pu- pull them in at a one or two or three. I'm having that problem right now. I don't have a payroll clerk. I'm losing my assistant. And I've reached out to the people that I know who I would love to have as my assistants and we can't pay them enough. You know, and it, the thing is, is like, there is some benefit to, well, there's many benefits to working here, obviously. But like, for instance, to me, the four day work week is a big draw because I have kids and that just works for my family. But that's not going to be the case for everyone, you know, and and I mean, essentially, when I here, I'm making what I was making as an assistant in Westfield. You know, so just kind of throwing that out there for for the sake of comparison.
What if there were more steps? Is that ever possible, Emily? What if there were 20 steps?
I mean, I guess we could. The only thing is, so then, like Jen was saying and stuff, you even with your admin and stuff, it's the whole scale is behind is the issue. That's the issue. It's the whole scale because 1530 is the lowest one. Like she said, that's like minimum wage.
But to be competitive, given what, say, Jenna and Barbara are saying, we're talking about a major increase in the scale. Because if we want to bring somebody in and rather not bring in entry level people all the time. An assistant from Westfield, who is now our treasurer, making a li- only a little bit more. I know Westfield's a bigger city and there's lots of other reasons to look at that. I think if we want to be competitive and to retain people, we may have to make this scale larger and the steps increase. So that if someone's here for 30 years, that means 18 of those years, they haven't moved. Am I correct? That's what the steps mean, right, Emily? They don't move except for COLA increases. We don't have a merit pay system. We don't have any other way. Connie? You're muted.
Sorry, I was just thinking the same thing. I think it's really I I I try to be fair and I I try to think about what's going to be fair. And I think that it's also about making sure that we're pulling in and retaining the best people for our particular community. And so this is something I'm I'm interested in, whether it's being, like, for example, just what Barbara was saying, I I don't think it's okay that she's been in the same kind of place with a minimal amount of increase in her pay. And so it seems to me that we need to adjust her level so that as a person, right, and as an employee of the city, we continue to respect and appreciate her contribution to the work that she's doing. And I don't know if it's moving her a step or whoever, or I even be open to the idea of creating more increases incrementally in the same kind of level. But I I think it's about being fair and I think it's about respecting the work that people are doing. And I think that we have to appreciate that.
I'm just, I haven't done the math, but it doesn't seem like from 11 to 12, in all of these steps, it's a major increase. What is it, 2%?
Yeah, they're all 2%.
Right. So if we had 20 steps, looking at the budget next year, and all of these people that are now maxed out go to step 13, we're talking a 2% increase in pay for each of those individuals. If I understand the math, that's all I'm saying. If we have 20 steps and we raise the scale from the minimum to whatever that 20 step 20th step is multiplied by 2%, okay? Are we now more competitive? That's just an idea I'm throwing out there. I kind of like it because then if the mayor has to hire someone or the city council has to hire someone, there's a hell of a lot more range of pay that you can attract someone in to. And maybe we change the minimums now because of what you said, Emily, the 4% or whatever. And we change the whole minimums, then we go up to 20 steps. I don't know. Is that too much? Maybe you can talk to your consultant about that idea. If we don't have to pay her to give us a thought. Because the Collins people, they they like to be paid.
I can give a
I don't blame them either, but still.
Yeah, so I just want to confirm, you said in the beginning, this is, this is going to be an ongoing discussion, right?
Yeah, we probably should conclude it soon. I just want everybody to understand where we were.
Sure.
And reading the Collins report, I gave it to all of you, so.
Cool. And and so I guess I I just, I think I misunderstood a little bit coming in, like, we, to some extent, can discuss the like, part of this is about the classification for the city council appointees.
That's how it started.
Whatever. That's how it started. And really, what we can logically do there is change grades. Like, you know, say, oh, the, maybe the clerk is now grade G or whatever. Like, I mean, unless we wanted to, or or, I mean, what we could potentially do, so that's what we could do without there, so that's what we could do without like global changes that will have much farther reaching implications outside of the whole thing. If we were to do things like increase the number of steps or increase the minimum pay at any given step, like, those are all things that we could potentially do, but those would obviously all have like far ranging fiscal implications that we would need to game out uh with, you know, the fiscal authorities in the city and undoubtedly the mayor. Um, I'm open to all of that. I just, like, I I just, am I understanding that correctly? That we're, like, there's the the limited thing and then there's sort of a bigger, like, are there
Well, if we establish that the grades are correct, and Barbara makes that argument that they're not, but I think that argument is more about the scale that the grade represents. And I'm not speaking for you, Barbara, but I think if we had more steps than that person there, how hard is it, um, Jen and Emily, for you to take this to twenty steps and look at a two percent increase with the current money, not anything new? And tell me what that looks like. And that way, way next year, what's the budget impact? Is that hard to do? I mean, if it's a lot of work, we could put off talking about this for a month, but I'd I'd like to know what that implication is. Be, because that's important information, right? Uh, I'm gonna jump to, well, Tom, are you raising your hand again?
Uh, just to finish what I was saying.
Oh, I interrupted you. I apologize.
You did. Uh, but it's all right. Um, is is just that, uh, you know, like, I'm really sensitive to the fact that right now, in the current environment that we have, like, attracting and retaining staff is important if we want to get stuff done, which is sort of the point of being a city. So um, I'm like, I'm, I'm just, I'm, I'd be really interested in hearing different proposals about from from any of the people who are here tonight about how we actually, how how you would address this. Uh, and I certainly will want to ultimately hear from the mayor too, because I don't want to come up with a proposal and then just get told like, no way. Um, but uh, I think that this is, this is super interesting and I I'm excited to keep talking about it.
Okay, I don't want to go too much further, um, except to say, Jen, how hard is that little task I just gave you and Emily?
Um, it's, it's not really that hard. Emily, you already have this all in an Excel spreadsheet, don't you? So it's just a matter of carrying out the formulas to twenty, um.
And I threw that out there just to see what that would do. And and it's just an example. Hadel, you have the last word. Are you still muted, Hadel?
That would be important. All you guys were talking about, I was looking at this um grade from, if we jump from twelve and drag it up to twenty, so if we talk about um grade F with two percent increase between step thirteen to twenty, we have five dollars and eighty-three cents over next seven years per hour.
That's all?
Yep. Oh, no.
That's not much.
Nope, um, hold on. So, yeah, so step thirteen for uh grade F would be thirty-nine dollars and eighteen cents. And at step twenty for same grade F, it will max out at forty-five dollars and one cents. So if we do the difference between forty-five oh one minus thirty-nine eighteen, that adds up to five dollars and eighty-three cents per hour. But it's over the year. So every year it it will be two percent, which is thirty-nine eighteen, thirty. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, that's interesting. All right, well, let's continue this discussion next meeting. And um I also gave you some information, counselors on stipends and uh salaries of elected officials. Um, I would like to look at the stipends of our boards and committees. Elected officials, we have more time on because we have until December thirty-first to make that decision. But if we want to raise stipends for boards or committees, we gotta do that before the budget is proposed. And those are set by ordinance. So we pass an ordinance that says the Board of Public Works members shall get X dollars. Then they get it next, but effective July one, then that's what they get. And we can make that effective date in a year. I mean, that's up to us, so. So look at those. Um, and Hadel and Jen, can you be prepared for your month quarterly reports next meeting or is that too early? We talked about February.
I will be.
Okay. I mean, I I don't want you to do extra work. I just want to know if you have the information and it's easy to call up.
Yeah, so um, we we have a plan. Um, I will get all the required information from Treasury Office by January thirty-first. And um, it gives me three days to work on the report and I'll send those reports out to you guys. If not by Thursday, then definitely by Monday, the week when we will have the finance committee meeting.
The meeting is February ninth, so you have until then.
Yes, so you will either receive it, you will either receive it by February third or February seventh.
Okay. And Jen, the COVID money, the ARPA money, is that something you can deal with?
Uh, yes, I mean, the COVID and FEMA, COVID's kind of, you know, just a matter of updating for the end results. And then there's, I can give you a report on FEMA. Um, ARPA, I can give you like what's been done, but the mayor is really kind of handling that. And I know there's a, we have like a master um spreadsheet. And I don't know, I guess I'll just have to find out from her how up to date that is because I don't.
We just want to be transparent, so whatever we can show.
Yep.
Um, we don't have any control over these funds, but we do have, the city taxpayers would like to know. Hadel, last comment?
Uh, we haven't spent much out of ARPA at this point. So we we might have like handful of things. It's not spent at all. There's still, um, I think at the planning stage and then implementation and then spending, so.
All right, well, maybe you're concluding on the COVID money and then if the mayor wants to go into where she wants to spend the money, I'll let her do that. Barbara? I promised Hadel she'd have the last word, Barbara.
No, I just wanted to say that if um, if there is gonna be discussion going forward on on the whole Exhibit B thing, um, it might be good, Dan, if you, if you put that topic into, you know, before the council to come to subcommittee because it it might, you know, move off just us into a bigger picture. And I think, I think it's better to be transparent that we're talking about more than maybe, you know, you know what I mean? To to have the whole.
Maybe expand the current, change the current uh agenda item to Exhibit B.
I think that makes sense.
Yeah, I was gonna ask you guys if you thought that would, makes sense to me too, because we're not just talking about our positions now, we're talking about everything.
Right, so if you could make a little memo about that, we can throw it on the agenda for next week, just so it's, it's, it's clear and you can feel comfortable talking about something broader.
If you can send me the ordinance language for the clerk to the council, I will include an agenda item change on that same report to the full council.
Not that I don't want you to talk about the other thing, but I think if you're gonna expand it, that it should be clear that that's, that's being discussed.
Okay. Anything else from anyone? Omar, anybody? Okay, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion to adjourn. Uh, Counselor Peak?
Aye.
Counselor Denham?
Aye.
Counselor says aye. We'll see you next week, everybody.